Ready, Nicole? You ready?
Okay, well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. Welcome to the special meeting of the, here at the Refin Building, for the Board of State or County Commissioners. With that, Madam Clerk.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Madam Clerk.
New business, item A, Public Hearing Regarding the 2024 Sedgwick, Sedgwick County Budget.
Okay, welcome, Nicole.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. This evening is the first public budget hearing for the 2024 recommended budget. Sedgwick County's recommended operating budget totals $518,464,784. This budget will be supported with a property tax levy of $188,880,368, which is approximately the equivalent to 29.30 mils, based on the estimated assessed valuation and subject to technical adjustments. I recommend you open the public budget hearing, receive comments, and close the public hearing once it is over.
Okay.
She said what I was gonna say.
All right, Ms. Manager, do you have anything else to add as we prep through this? We've all had our, our budget books, and we've had a lot of review. And this is kind of a required open meeting that we've tried, we've set on purpose to be in the evening. And I think it's broadcast on YouTube and Facebook Live. It's not broadcast on KPTS. So, so it'll be available for review and recorded. And so this is the public meeting related to that. Do any Commissioners have any comments about the budget before we go to the public, public comment? And, okay, and I don't see any right now. So, we do have a sign up sheet. And we have, the first one to speak to us is Faith Martin. And you can address the Commission. And traditionally, we, traditionally Faith, we do five minutes, name and address. But we will see how, if there's feedback from Commissioners, then it could go longer than that.
Sure.
Okay.
Faith Martin, 608 South jury. I don't have a lot to say. Jim gets an earful at most of our Commission meetings. And this is actually something we've talked about a lot at our Cabs. And this is something actually that we've talked about that's more at the state level, which is our LAVTR, which is the local ad valorem tax. And thankfully, I just got a couple of numbers. Because we haven't received any here at the county, and I know we're talking about, you know, whether or not we should, you know, raise or lower, you know, $64.5 million is what we've missed since the state has not deigned to give those dollars back to our county. And that's the numbers thankfully your awesome team, your staff, has just given to me right before I came up to talk. I think that's something that people in the county probably would really like to have back into our coffers as we're talking about what programs to maybe cut, what we should, what we should have, not have, whether or not it's safety, whether or not it's, you know, mental health, those kind of things. I'll let other people with other demands kind of make those choices because I'm always gonna say what I think is important. I just think that $64.5 million over the last almost 20 years is probably money that Sedgwick County should have gotten back. I also think there's grants that we're not taking advantage of. I saw that the state released some counties and cities across the state that got access to funds. And I reached out again to my very available county Commissioner. And I encourage everyone in our county to reach out to our very available county Commissioners. And he said, you know what, reach out to the, reach out to the Finance Department. They'll be able to help you out. And they were like, yeah, there's probably some more grants that we should probably be taking advantage of. So before we raise taxes and before we do some other decisions that we might not be able to take back, we should be applying for more grants at the state level. Federal grants, yeah, maybe we don't qualify. But there are state grants that we definitely qualify for that we're not applying to, that we could get, that could be helping us out here in Sedgwick County. And we should be fighting really hard to get these ad valorem tax credits back. That's all I have to say.
Okay, Faith. There might be some questions, but you're more than welcome. First one is Commissioner Howe.
Hi, Faith, thank you for being here tonight. And I don't think that's actually the whole story. The $64.5 million is for LAVTR. But there's actually another program called the City County Revenue Sharing Program. That's a parallel to that. They, the state has defunded both of those essentially at the same time. If you add them together, it's about a hundred, last report I saw was about $101 million altogether. And I don't know if anybody in the audience can verify that number. But it's about $101 million, I think, last time I saw a report. She's saying it's about right, okay. So again, this is actually two programs. And again, that represents about 20 years' worth of the state not providing funding. I think right now, based on, it's formulaic, based on the latest and greatest numbers, I think that we're missing out on around $7 or $8 million a year roughly, between those two programs. And the intent of those two programs is to, is reduce the dependence on property taxes. So if the state did provide that, we would be able to levy about one, maybe one and a quarter mils less property taxes and still provide the same services because revenue would come from the state to provide the funding for those necessary programs. So, so again, the intent is not to, not necessarily to expand the, the services or expand the size and scope of government, but to, to get us off of the, off the dependency of property taxes. And so, again, the LAVTR is one program, the City County Revenue Sharing Program is another program. With respect to the issue of grants, I think, I think I sent you some numbers. I don't remember exactly what those numbers were. But if, if we're not, if there are grants out there that provide, that would provide revenue for programs that we're currently doing, I would like to know what they are. As far as I know, we have a grant writing team that, we're pretty aggressive on grants. And I don't know that we're intentionally not going after any grant that would be available in Sedgwick County. I think we're doing everything we can to get grant funds to offset the burden of our own, our own taxpayers here locally. So I would love to hear someone tell me that we're missing out on some kind of grant that, that we probably should be going after. I'm not aware of that. So again, to the point that we should be more aggressive. I, I think we are aggressive, I don't know what we're not doing, so.
Are you glad to talk to that, Commissioner? Lindsay, can you come forward and talk about the grant team in high level?
Do you still need me up here?
No. Faith, you, you can have a seat unless you wanna.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Faith has said the, the team is awesome, and I agree with that.
I do too. They're pretty fantastic. Commissioners, Lindsay Pogerso, your CFO. So to, Tom, you wanted me to speak to the grants team specifically? Anything in particular or just what it is?
No, just how they track grants and how we're constantly monitored.
So, so we have invested quite a bit in grants since, especially since CARES came around as a part of the 2019 strategic plan that the Commission approved. There was a grants initiative that was put out there. So since that time, in our property tax-supported funds, we have added not just the revenue manager's responsibilities. We have given her a grant administrator as well as a grant analyst. We also have engaged a consulting service that's actually helping us with ARPA funds to grow our system and to more actively go after grants. And so I would agree, we are quite aggressive right now. There may be some things from the state that we are not eligible to pursue. But that's what that team spends all their time doing is evaluating those opportunities.
And just, and just for point of reference, I'm sorry to pipe up here. But this current year, what's on our grants page right this minute is we have $138,952,618.12 in our current grant, on our grants page. That's from 31 separate grants that we are currently performing. So the idea that we're not aggressive, I think that right now we have, you know, again, basically almost a third of our budget is from grant funds. That's a pretty amazing number, actually.
Well, and so I just want to be clear when we state that number. That is not just for a fiscal year, that's for the, for the full term of the grant.
Sure.
So that may not be available in the course of a year to us. But yes, we are, we are more active in grants than we have ever been.
Thank you.
Okay, and I would add also, Lindsay, that Commissioners in our position sometimes receive separate emails from various places, WAMPO, whatever, that offer us. And I think the Commission has been really good in forwarding all of those to you and to Finance to make sure that we can capitalize on any opportunity.
Yes, and we pursue every one of those to see if it's an appropriate fit for us.
Thank you. So thank you Commissioners for being a part of the watchdog to see the availability. Okay, there's another question. Commissioner Dennis.
Well, thank you very much, Chairman. And thank you for bringing up LAVTR today. That's something that I brought back from the Kansas Association of County Commissioners meeting that we held out in Hayes this, earlier this year. Actually, last week, we just had a Zoom call with Kansas Association of Counties that we had a number of staff, and I was on that Zoom call. Because what we need to do is, we need a united voice. And we need people like you all to talk to our legislators and explain to them the impact of not providing these funds to us that we are supposed to receive by statute. So let me give you a couple of statistics because I want to make sure that you have some accurate figures. If, if we got LAVTR, which we've talked about, and if they paid it to us this year, that's $8,806,350 that we're missing out on. CCRF, CCRSF is $15,350,340. That's a total of $24,156,690 we're missing out on. And just to give you an idea of what we've lost out on from the very beginning of when they quit paying us, because they did pay us LAVTR in 2001, 2002, and 2003. But since that time, we have lost a total of the state, the state of Kansas, That's what we've lost. And in actuality, KAC provided us a little spreadsheet that I was able to go into. And I think that all of the people from Finance that were on the Zoom call had access to this. If you look at just the LAVTR portion of it, that we could have gotten this year, it amounts to 3.5 mils. That's a significant amount that we could reduce it. And the purpose of it is not to add to our spending, it's to reduce property taxes. We've heard from some of our legislators to say, oh, if we give it to you, you'll just spend more money. And, but no, the statute's very clear that all of that funding has to go to reduction of property taxes. So KAC is going to be working very hard this year. That's going to be one of their legislative platforms. When I came back from Hayes, I brought it up to all the Commissioners and gave them this exact information. We're gonna have it on our legislative agenda. But again, I, the legislators believe they know better about how to run county government than we do. And I'm being factual. And so it's gonna be an uphill battle for us to try and get these. So the only way that we can is if the public tells their representatives, their state representatives and state senators, that the money needs to come back to the counties, that the counties can use this funding and not just pad our budget, but reduce property taxes. And that's our goal. The Legislature is looking at such things, and we talked about it at our meeting this morning, of putting a 4% cap on our property tax increases. Sounds great. If it goes up for a state change to our constitution, it'll pass. But Commissioner Howe spoke very eloquently on that this morning, on the damage that that would cause to the real estate market and to the counties if they did pass that. But I don't doubt that it would pass if it went on, on the ballot. So we need your help. We're, we're gonna do everything we can do. I'm gonna fight to get that on our legislative agenda. KAC is gonna have it on their legislative agenda. We've got a, a KAC conference coming up here in, in Wichita coming up next month, I believe. And so we're gonna work this. And I appreciate you bringing it up, honestly, I do. Because it's something that I've already talked about before, and we're gonna continue to talk about it as we move forward. Because this is a way that we can reduce your property taxes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and Commissioner Beatty.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Faith, for sharing. LAVTR is a big topic of conversation around here. And there's a few reasons why it's a necessary conversation that I think our public needs to be more aware of. We, county manages 16 departments on behalf of the state. JRF, aging elections, 16 of these things. Since 2008, expenses in these 16 departments are up 9.1%. State aid for these 16 departments is down 30.5%. So what's happened is we've had to meet that gap out of our general fund in most part. And property tax dollars are meeting that gap. So it was incredibly frustrating to see $4 billion sitting in the coffer, $3 billion sitting in the coffer at the state, while we are laboring down here to meet the needs where services are provided. This is where direct services are provided, at the city and at the county level. And we need our partners from the, from the state to do what I believe is their, their part in, in this conversation. So LAVTR is certainly gonna be a part, if I have anything to say, on our legislative agenda. But our, our citizens need to know, not just that the state has neglected funding that mandate and funding what's been on the books, an unfunded liability for them in many regards, but we, they've gotta see the numbers. Our constituents need to see the numbers of how this is impacting county budget and direct services. It's incredibly important. I have a question, Lindsay, and it may be for the grants team. Cities get significant grants, community block development grants. Is this not something that we have available to counties? Or are we participating at all in these type of block grants?
So CDBG grants, which you're referring to, are available to cities or counties. So because the cities in our community are receiving those funds, we can't also receive them. So if we wanted to compete for them, we would need to deprive this, we'd be in competition. One of us would lose out.
Okay, okay. Good point. Appreciate that. So thank you. Thank you for LAVTR, appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on, on this speaker? I don't. And we do not have anybody else signed up to speak, correct? All right, so if there's any additional comments or questions for any, anybody, not challenged, but ask the Commission if they want to make any more comments. Okay. Okay, Commissioner Howe?
This actually may be a quick, an easy one for Kelly Arnold, so. I know we are required to put out a notification for this public hearing to, to notify taxpayers that there's an opportunity to speak to this hearing today or, or maybe the next one. Has that, is that notification actually gone out already? And I don't remember actually getting that in my mailbox, so I was wondering.
Good morning, Commissioners, Kelly Arnold, County Clerk. So the Legislature has, our office put out a revenue neutral rate letter every year now for those governing bodies that are gonna exceed that revenue neutral rate. Our letter is, and, and this is by statutory date, ours goes out on August 11th. And that gives, there's a 10-day window from those notifications to the hearings of the different governing bodies. So ours goes out on 11th. They will all receive it in time for essentially budget adoption and, and further hearings.
Okay, so our next, our next public hearing is on the Budget Adoption Day. It's August the 23rd at 9:00 AM.
Correct.
So that meets that 10-day, that 10-day window. Have any, have all Commissioners already, besides myself, have the other Commissioners already had the budget presentations at their cab boards? Is there, which cab boards are still left to be? I know mine is, but.
District 5 and District 2 have nothing.
Okay. Yeah, I, I did ask for that data, and I don't think I ever received a, a schedule of those meetings. But I guess District, I'd like to know more details about District 2's meeting. Again, I think the public might be interested in maybe accessing whatever meetings are available. So District 5 meeting will be this coming Friday at 4 o'clock PM at the Oaklawn Community Center. I don't have the address, but someone wants to contact me, I'll get you the exact address. But the Oaklawn Community Center, which is south of 47th Street, just into the Oakview Community. But anyway, that will be this Friday at 4:00 PM. We'll have a budget, a budget presentation at that location. I'm sure we can do some Q and A there if anybody wants to, to address the county regarding our budget plans. And with that, if District 2 is willing to, to share the details of that meeting, I think it'd be great for the community to also be aware of that one as well. All right, thank you.
Okay, well, we only had one speaker signed up, Faith. Usually we just limit it, but.
Apologies. Nicole Gibbs, Strategic Communications. I wanted to answer your questions, sir, about Cabs. District 1 had their budget discussion on July 17th. District 2 is coming up August 8th. District 3 was on July 24th. District 4 had theirs on July 25th. And then, as you mentioned, yours will be in District 5, August 4th.
Okay, so all four of those are done already?
Three of the five.
Three, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Three of them, I see, 8, 8, okay. And those ones that are complete, are the minutes available? Again, assuming that they captured the questions and answers in the minutes or whatever, that might be nice to see what kind of conversation may happen, happen at those cab boards, if those are, things are available, okay?
So, Commissioner, sorry. And we, the minutes actually won't be approved by those groups until their next meeting. So there are no official minutes. However, what we were talking about, and if we had done the, the follow-up today, which I apologize, I forgot to, to have that done. What we would have told you is that we would ask each of the Commissioners and/or the staff that were there to report out on the comments so that you could hear what the conversation was before we had official minutes available for you. So we might ask Commissioners to do that recap at next Wednesday's Commission meeting. And staff can certainly help with helping people remember what happened.
I would really like to have those comments because, again, I, I feel like we're, we're lacking public input. And just, you know, I may, I may be the only one up here that feels this way, but I really wish we had another public hearing besides the one on the Budget Adoption Day because it's awfully late in the process for us to receive something really profound. We don't have time to respond to it by adjusting the budget at that time. So it's just, it's just a bad process to have, have a, have a public hearing and then right after that, adopt the budget, so.
And I understand, unfortunately, that's actually statutory requirement with having to adopt the levy that day and have a public hearing on that revenue neutral rate. And so, and then having a budget adoption following that. So I don't necessarily disagree, but there's not a whole lot of flexibility that we have with that, as opposed to adding additional hearings.
Yeah, maybe it's a legislative discussion. We, we should ask for the Legislature to address that because it's really not a good process.
Well, and we had mentioned that to them at the time.
All right, thanks again.
Okay, a couple more comments. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I would just wanted to publicly state that, again, August 8th is the Second District Advisory Board. It's at the Hazel Public Library at 6 o'clock. Everybody's welcome. And I, I also want to just point out that if anybody has anything, public comment that they would like to discuss about the budget between now and then, they're welcome to come to any of our Commission meetings. We have public comments for that reason. And we also talk about budget every, every meeting from now until we adopt the budget. So if you are unable to make my Advisory Board meeting, or Commissioner Howe's, or the next meeting where we talk, where we adopt the budget, you're welcome to come to any of our meetings at any point between now and then and discuss this as well.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. Just to back up a little bit on my Citizens Advisory Board, Tom Stoltz did come and brief the board, and they asked a number of questions. Matter of fact, Joe Brown is in the off, in the audience today. He's on my Citizens Advisory Board. So if you have any questions after the meeting, I, I'm sure that he'd be glad to hang around and talk with you about what went on. But they are very interested in the budget. And I appreciate Tom coming out and giving a very detailed report. And we do that each year in time that they have an opportunity to see it shortly after the budget book comes out. Thank you.
Okay. So again, we had people sign up. We had a process that we followed. And I know Elder, you, you requested to speak, but you spoke this morning, and you can come back at any meeting and, or contact any of us with your questions to follow up. Okay, so we try to stay consistent with the process that, that we have established. All right, respectfully, thank you. All right. Yes, Mr. Wagner?
I, I was just gonna ask, Chairman, were you talking about the policy about people not commenting on multiple meetings in a row? Is that what you were referencing just now? Well, I, I, no, I was.
That's true, you have to skip a meeting, I'm sorry.
I didn't know she was asking to comment tonight.
Yeah, apparently she sent a message to others to comment tonight. She did not sign up, but.
Okay. I was gonna suggest that you would let her make a comment tonight.
Well, she had a question, I guess, then, according to, with reference from Mr. Wagner. Ma'am, I guess you could, if you wanted to ask a question, you can just ask a quick question and, and we will. Yes.
Thank you for giving me that opportunity, guys. I planned to just be here just to listen.
Right.
Of course, I'm Elder Josie Wright, guys, and President of Programming Services for our Youth Expressing Sorrow to for Christ Jesus Ministries. So we talked a lot about the construction of our new fitness health zone for children. It's gonna be built on the property we met, Morris Sheets. And so we're into that construction and also our residential to fulfill a legal guardianship, sole custody with myself and my second cousin, who is now, right now, currently in Starkey Residential. So it's a long-term, I mean, it's, we've been waiting for this for a while, which would assist, you know, the budget because we have a place to live. Okay, so I have emailed, you know, Sister Russo on an administrative advancement that would meet the demands of the Sedgwick County Offender Reentry Program, would take care of some dire needs as far as myself and residential for myself and vehicle transportation. We can get our transportation services going back. And just, you know, wait until the next phase of the award or what have you that's gonna go to the United Citizen Project that we've proposed. I'm speaking to Mr. Stoltz or whatnot. He did say that there's some forms that he'd like for me to sign, trying to get into the next phase of purchasing. At the same time, the advancement to the deposit slip that I'd sent to Sister Russo's email address in Karenon would assist tremendously. I know Donald and I are on our last leg with this vehicle. It, you know, just different things that would assist mainly, like I said, our partnership. City Expansion Investment Partners are solely, I mean, we're in it for the SCORE program, Sedgwick County Offender Reentry. I realize there is no program, but we're financing the inside of the detention, adult detention, and also, you know, helping to coordinate programs that would be conducive to the.
You said you had a, but you had a question for us?
Yes, if I could have that administrative advancement, that's my question.
I'm sorry?
I, once again, yeah, that's the question. I don't know if it's to the Finance Department or if it's toward the Sedgwick County Treasury. We'd like, and when I say I, you know, our. We'd like, and when I say I, you know, our partnership, because it's going to be, you know, well, $250, I mean, we might wait on the rest of the funds. What's going to have to happen is I'm going to have to end up opening up a bigger savings account, but.
If I can just maybe, if you have a request for a budget item or a capital improvement item, then you can submit it to any commissioner or to, to the finance or to the manager and it can be taken up in the budget process to see if it's something that works traditionally or, or nonprofit at the county. We do have our, our set stuff with, with com care and many other, a few other things we do. A, a new project right in this part of the budget process might be difficult to, to include right now, but maybe it could be a, a part of the process for the, for the next.
Do you think I should wait on the administrative budget? I mean, just included with the entire award for the financial?
What do you call it? Administrative?
Just an advancement. An advancement to assist with administrative costs. I mean, we could.
Okay.
Desperately.
Well, if you just, I think you've emailed Commissioner Dennis one time and it's kind of spells that out and, and I think we can forward it over to, for consideration as a, as a budgetary item, okay?
All right. Other than that, we're just waiting for, you know, approval. I think there is an award certificate or something that would take us to the next level of phase so we can get purchasing underway. I mean, is that it?
No.
I don't know how this goes. It's my first time doing anything with it. Yeah. I don't know what the next phase is, but we're ready.
And I will try and answer that for you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Sister Russo. All right, thank you, guys.
Okay. So Commissioners Lindsay Pogerso again. I think I received an email earlier this evening I have not yet had a chance to respond to, I think with this request. Because it is a request to fund a community development project, what we will do is get you some forms to complete that we send everyone through and when those come back through, we will evaluate those, bring them to the commission and then let you know if you need to come back in order to accept those funds. So that will be the process. So we'll make sure, I have your email address, so we'll make sure we'll get those to you.
Okay. Thank you, Lindsay, for clarifying that.
I think we're good.
All right. Appreciate that. Okay, so with that, we do have a, a fire agenda as well, but unless there's any other comments from the commissioners or any questions, we will adjourn the governing body of the, oh, we have to make a motion to receive and file. Good, good call. I will make a motion to receive and file the public comment for the special meeting regarding the budget.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. So we will adjourn the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners and we will now open the governing body of Fire District Number One. Madam Clerk?
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. And Madam Clerk, next, next item, please.
New business, item A, public hearing regarding the 2024 Fire District One budget.
Okay. Welcome again, Nicole. Thank you for being here.
Hello again, Commissioners and Chairman. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. This evening is the first public budget hearing for the 2024 recommended budget for Fire District One. It totals $27,735,225. This budget will be supported with a property tax levy of $21,308,547, which will require a mil levy of approximately 17.889 mils based on the estimated assessed valuation and subject to technical adjustments. I recommend you open the public hearing, receive comments, and close the public hearing once it is over.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions or comments from the commission at this time before we go to public comment? Don't see any. So we will open public comment, but in the Fire District Number One, we had, we didn't have anybody sign up, zero. So we do not have any public comment on Fire District Number One. So with that, any other comments? Being none? Okay. Is there anything else that needs to, so we will adjourn the, the governing body of Fire District Number One. And with that, thank you all for being here tonight. And, I'm sorry, Mr. Wagner?
I was going to suggest that you formally close the public hearing on that side of the order.
Okay. I'll make a motion, make a motion to, we will announce that, we will announce that we have closed the public comment. And so, so the governing body of Fire District Number One, there, is there anything else can, needs to come before the body of Fire District Number One?